Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting. This is a combined meeting, regular agenda and business meeting, of the Board of Education pursuant to New Jersey statutes and rules adopted by the Board of Education. Notice of this meeting was sent to Star Ledger and Cable Vision of Elizabeth on April tenth, two thousand twenty-five. In addition, this notice is posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of five hundred North Broad Street. And pursuant to this act, a copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth, New Jersey. We want to welcome everyone present here at School Fifty-One and to our television viewers to this April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Board of Education. We are here to govern, provide management oversight, and make policy for the district. And the superintendent manages the district. This is a meeting of the Board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of Elizabeth Board of Education permanent record so that the recordings will adequately reflect the proceedings. Please refrain from talking while speaking, while others are speaking. We ask that you silence the sounds of your electronic devices since this is legally mandated that these procedures be accurately recorded. We may have to ask for you to periodically turn the noise down if we begin to interfere with the recording capabilities. There is a public portion of the meeting for the citizens to address the Board of Education. Participants of this public portion must personally sign in prior to the start of the public participation portion, and they may have an opportunity to speak. The sign-in sheet states the name, address, and telephone number, and the reason why the person wants to comment, whether it is an agenda item or general education comment. We are pleased that you have joined us this evening to take time out of your busy schedule to be with us here at the Board of Education. Thank you for your interest in the Elizabeth Public Schools. At this time, Mr. Kennedy?
Barbosa. Baffalas. Carvalho. Chevres.
Here.
Jacobs. Marina Ortega.
Here.
Goncalves Pastana. Rivera.
Here.
Neron.
President, please stand as we take a moment of silence for Afia Inbat, third grade student at John Marshall School Number Twenty, Elizabeth Robinson, food service worker at Dr. Albert Einstein Academy School Number Twenty-nine, James Ford, former Board member of the Elizabeth Public Schools, and for all those who lost their lives in Dominican Republic during that recent tragedy, please stand and give pay their families respect and give them a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, please remain standing for the presentation of colors by the Admiral William F. Halsey Health and Public Safety Academy Junior ROTC. Thank you. Please remain standing as Vice President Maria Carvalho leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the Star Spangled Banner.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Please remain standing as Board Member Jerry Jacobs will lead us in the Pledge of Ethics.
As a member of the Elizabeth Public School Professional Learning Community, I will teach people and others to be treated. To do that, I pledge to you. Understand that the school community is a special place. Listen respectfully while someone else is speaking by paying close attention and not interrupting. Speak in a calm voice and use proper language. Dress appropriately for teaching and learning. Inspire the best in myself and others by celebrating success and learning from mistakes. Care about others by demonstrating acts of kindness. Be a lifelong learner by taking every opportunity to learn from others.
Thank you. Let's give our Junior ROTC a big round of applause. Thank you. You may be seated. We just want to take a moment before we proceed with our meeting to take a pause and recognize our former Board of Education member, Mr. James Ford, who recently passed. Vice President Carvalho, I believe you have a resolution.
Good evening. Whereas James W. Ford was born September seventh, nineteen fifty-three, and graduated from Arthur L. Johnson High School in Clark, New Jersey in nineteen seventy-one. Whereas throughout his life, James W. Ford was a dedicated professional and community servant while enjoying many different personal interests. Whereas on April twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-five, James W. Ford was sworn into his first term as a member of the Elizabeth Board of Education, serving the Board with great dedication to provide the children of Elizabeth and their families the best education and school system possible for nearly ten years. James W. Ford twice served as president of the Elizabeth Board of Education in nineteen ninety-seven through nineteen ninety-eight, and then again in two thousand and one to two thousand and two, while acting as chair for five committees and a member of eight committees. During James W. Ford's tenure on the Board, the district and Board would set a course for long-range facility plans that resulted in the construction of then Westminster Academy School Number Twenty-six, Francis C. Smith Early Childhood Center School Number Fifty, and Donald Stewart Early Childhood Center School Number Fifty-one, with several more newly constructed schools that would come over the next decade already in the planning phase. James W. Ford also served on the Board of Salvation Army of Elizabeth, an organization that provides various programs and serves to help meet people's physical, mental, and spiritual needs. During a long career of various endeavors and pursuits, James W. Ford was renowned by his tireless work ethics and savvy that allowed him to transform Amspec LLC, once a local office and lab in New Jersey, into a global empire that provides leading testing, inspections, and certification services for a wide range of industries and products. The Elizabeth Board of Education and Elizabeth Public Schools Professional Learning Community were saddened to learn of James W. Ford's recent passing and express their sympathies and heartfelt sorrow to his family, friends, and loved ones. Therefore, be it resolved that the love, purpose, and devotion which James W. Ford lived each day of his life and served both the Elizabeth Public Schools and greater Elizabeth community serve as an inspiration to us all. Be it further resolved that this resolution spread on the official minutes of the Elizabeth Board of Education and copy of this resolution be presented to his family. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. And our prayers and condolences go out to his family and all those that we honored earlier. At this time, I'd like to pass the opener floor to our Superintendent, Superintendent Hugemeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Board President. I'd like to be able to provide an introduction to our student representative for this evening. Josiah Hawley is an exemplary scholar at J. Christian Bowligge Finance Academy who embodies excellence through her impressive academic accomplishments and active participation in extracurricular activities. With a GPA of four point oh eight five seven, she not only excels in her studies but is also a dedicated member of the National Honor Society, respected for her positive character, community service, and her leadership skills. Her academic achievements are matched by her ability to juggle multiple responsibilities, showcasing her strong work ethic and outstanding time management ability. In addition to her academic endeavors, Josiah also has taken on leadership roles in various activities such as the varsity cheer captain, leading her team at many events including pep rallies and All-Star Games. She's earned nominations as an All-American cheerleader four times. As the junior and senior president of her class, she has successfully organized spirit weeks and collaborated with student government to foster a positive school environment. Josiah's commitment to her community shines through her volunteer work, including her role as a volunteer hospital visitor at Trenitas Hospital, where she brings joy and support to her students. Additionally, her involvement with junior achievement, high school heroes, allows her to educate younger students about financial literacy and business concepts. Josiah has been honored with several nominations and selections by her peers, including the twenty-four twenty-five Homecoming Queen, the NAVS Scholar Representative for Community-Wide Events, and recognition as a Bowligge Bowl Student of the Month, along with receiving Union County Unsung Hero Award. Josiah exemplifies the qualities we strive to cultivate in our young scholars. She's insightful, focused, and committed to her ambitions. As a voice for her peers and an advocate for positive change, Josiah cherishes her family, friends, and community, her kindness and caring nature to strengthen the bonds within our school and contribute to making the world a better place. It is my honor to be able to introduce Josiah Hawley as our student representative. Federal Joy, this evening, yes.
Let's give Ms. Hawley another big round of applause. Welcome onboard. Mr. Candy, can you record Ms. Hawley as one of the Board members for today?
Yes, thank you, noted.
Thank you. At this time, public participation will take place. Citizens may address the Board. Microphones are open for public comment to those who have signed in prior to this session. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public comment shall be limited to sixty minutes. No individual shall be able to yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the Board Officer. No participants may address or question Board members individually. Each speaker shall comply in all respects of Board Policy Three Nine Three Two Two. Copies were provided next to the sign-in sheet. The following rules will apply. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals. No vulgar or indecent language. A person may address the Board no more than once during a single meeting. Comments will not be debated. Any person in violation of this policy will be warned and their comments may be terminated if needed. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the Board in public, not a meeting of the public. At this time, we have, I think Ms. Candy Perah? Is that the name? Yes. Please come forward. Good evening, Ms. Candy.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Candy and I am an organizer with the Youth Exists and Resists Collective, a youth group in Elizabeth fighting for immigrant rights. I am also a sophomore at Jefferson High School Academy, and at the age of ten, I migrated to the United States from Dominican Republic. And I came to this country with hope for safety, for a better future, and for the chance to learn. But lately, instead of feeling safe in school, I feel scared. I carry this fear with me every day, not just for my parents but for myself too. It's hard to sit in class and focus with the increased presence of ICE in our city. When I hear about bills that could enforce undocumented students to pay tuition, it feels like they're trying to push us out. And when I see a president targeting black and brown immigrant youth like me, I can't help but feel like they may come after me or my peers during school hours. I feel like I don't belong, even in a place that's supposed to be for everyone. Elizabeth is my home. This school is my home, but it doesn't always feel like home when I'm made to feel like a threat or a number. This fear is real and is a barrier to my education. Schools are supposed to be spaces where students can thrive and excel, not a place where students live every day in fear that any form of misbehavior may result in contact with immigration enforcement. I'm asking the Board of Education to take action, create clear, strong policies that protect all students like me and families, regardless of their immigration status. Train staff on what to do if ICE shows up. Don't stay silent. Make it known that our schools are a place of safety, not fear. Real school safety means more than just locked doors. It means food security, mental health support, training teachers on our rights, investing in our arts programs, and policies that protect all students. We need the Board to stand with us, not just in words but in action. Thank you, and we hope we can meet you soon.
Thank you. Please forgive me if I say the name wrong. I'm trying to read what's been written. I believe it's Jean, and it starts with a C. Sella? Is that your name?
Yeah, Jean Cala.
Jean Cala?
Yeah.
Okay, Jean Cala. Good evening.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Jean, and I am also an organizer with the Youth Exists and Resists Collective. I am a senior at FJCA and will soon be going to college. I am the child of immigrant parents who also came to this country fleeing from poverty and violence in hope to give their children a better life and education. My story is not unique. Thousands of students in Elizabeth have immigrant parents or immigrants themselves. Since January, Elizabeth has had numerous ICE raids occur while students are on their way to school or are in school. We have seen the trauma ICE brings in our communities as it purposefully targets black and brown immigrants and separates our families. Their targets are the same population that make up our schools. With the increased presence in ICE in our schools in Elizabeth, it has been hard for us to focus on school and feel safe to leave our homes. We live in fear every day, wondering if ICE may come into our classrooms, especially after Trump announced that they can enter our schools. On January twenty-fourth, a TikTok video which is now deleted went viral when an Elizabeth resident reported that ICE had came into Halsey and removed students. This caused a wave of fear as students began to repost this video, worrying if they should go to school the next day. Since this incident, the Board of Education has yet to address publicly to students and parents about what had happened on this exact day. and parents about what had happened on this exact day and if there had been any actual cooperation between the Board of Ed and ICE. Immigration enforcement doesn't just disrupt families. It destabilizes entire school communities. Parents fear that dropping off their children in school can result in deportation. Students can't focus in school as they worry their parents will be detained or deported while learning. Our schools must be sanctuaries of learning, not places where the threat of law enforcement can tear apart families and disrupt lives. This is why we urge the Board of Education to take any and all action to keep immigration, youth, and families safe by introducing and passing resolutions. We urge that they create and pass resolutions committed to creating accessible and safe learning environments for all students to thrive regardless of their immigration status. We urge that they meet with students, parents, and community members when drafting these kinds of solutions to ensure that they are meeting the needs of the community. We want to work together to create the schools that all students deserve, and we hope to meet you soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Next, we have David Lenis.
Good evening, Board of Education.
Good evening.
My name is David, and I am a member with the Youth Exists and Resists Collective. I also stand here as a former Elizabeth High School student who graduated from Hamilton in two thousand and twenty. But I also stand here as an uncle whose niece attends Terrance C. Riley School Number Seven, an uncle to a niece who has two hard-working immigrant parents. Both of her parents migrated from Colombia at the age of twelve with hopes of having an education and building a better future for themselves. And they did. They went to school in Elizabeth and graduated in two thousand and five. They got married and had two beautiful daughters and put one of them in school here. Why? Because they trust that Elizabeth Public Schools will keep them safe. Yet every day as I watch the news, I grow more and more concerned. ICE is becoming more and more vicious, showing up to apartments nearby schools to detain parents during school hours, breaking car windows to detain people. They are detaining students. They are detaining legal residents. They detained a veteran in Newark. It feels as if nobody is safe. When we send my niece to school, we are trusting the Board of Education with her safety and her future. Thousands of parents and families are entrusting you with the safety of our children. I no longer feel safe sending her to school. Every day I worry that dropping her off to school may result in the possibility of ICE being nearby and detaining people. Since January, there has been a rise of ICE presence in Elizabeth. And yet, the Board has made no announcements on how they will keep our children safe from immigration enforcement. School staff, parents, students, and community members have yet to receive any materials on ignoring your rights. This is why we urge the Board of Education to take any and all action to keep immigrant youth and families safe by introducing and passing resolutions, committed to creating accessible and safe learning environments for all students who thrive regardless of their immigration status. We urge that they create spaces where students and families can talk about their concerns and where the Board takes real action. Please protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Maria Frantini.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here because on February twenty-fifth, we had a meeting at Elizabeth High School with one of the parents. And we were told that some information would be given to her. It is now April, and nothing was done. Mr. Ojeda sat with us when Ms. Jimenez, the principal, had said that the parent could get footage of what had happened to her child. Now, all of a sudden, Ms. Jimenez also told her, "You don't need to come to the Board of Education meetings. Just come and speak to me." Correct. Right?
Ms. Maria, please address the board, not the gentleman.
Okay. Not a problem. But he was there. He's my witness too. So what had happened until this day? They did not give her the footage of what happened to the child. Now, all of a sudden, they came with, "We can't do this because it's not through the legal department because another child's face is on there." The parent never asked. They offered to give it to her because her child was hurt. And also, they also promised her to have the child special ed, was supposed to have the assistant. "Oh, we're never changing her. She's gonna stay put." Again, the assistant was changed. There's no consistency of what's going on in the school. This child is a special need child. You cannot keep changing teachers on the special need child when they feel comfortable. All these testings were supposed to be done. They're yet to be done. It's nice when you go to the school, you're promised roses. And then at the end, these parents get a bunch of weed. I'm here to advocate for this child. I'm not here to advocate for myself or anything. But things have to be done correctly. And Ms. Jimenez, tell her that I will not stop coming here. As long as there are child that needs and that wants and that steps in my office with a parent, I'm gonna back that child up a hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Amay Bernades? I hope I said that right?
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
My name is Amy Benavides. I, almost fourteen years ago, a boy was born, which is my son. A year and a half later that he was born, he was diagnosed autistic. As a mother, to hear those kind of news is very hard. We think many things and say, "Is our child gonna be safe? Is he gonna be able to socialize? Is he gonna be able to be normal to play with other kids?" Education, all that, that's the main concern for us as parents, is thinking, "Is he gonna be okay?" Over the years, I've been struggling with him in school, getting therapies, which has been hard. Some cases that were, he was not approved, okay, not getting enough therapy. He started high school this year. That's a ninth grade. Last year, he was in elementary school. We had an issue with one of the aides that he had, an assistant. There was some conflict between the assistant and my son, which my son comes home and tells me a lot of things what goes on in school, which we were worried as a father and mother, you know, getting more of the story that he told us that his aide touched him, threw him to the wall, you know, and told him to calm down. As an autistic child, they cannot control their senses, okay? So I know it's very hard to be able to educate these kids. And that's why I feel, when I take, when I know when these kids, my son, and as a mother, we think our children are gonna be safe, especially in the District of Elizabeth. And I don't understand... This year, we had a conflict that my son's finger got caught in the door in the cafeteria. I asked the story what happened. They're telling me the principal and all the... The child study team, you know, we had a meeting. They tell me the story that my son, personal aide was with him. And the other kid that slammed the door, my son's finger got caught in the door, was also there. So I wanna know what happened exactly. If the personal aides are there, why did my son's finger got caught in the door? Thinking my son is safe. Is the assistant doing a job? I wanna know. So I asked her for the video footage. Until this day, it's been two months, and I still don't get the video footage.
Ms. Amy, your time has expired. But we can't discuss your matter in public, but I would like for one of the assistant superintendents, Dr. Ojeda, to take this matter and discuss with you further what has taken place. All right? Thank you. Dr. Ojeda, thank you. We have Ms. Claudette Smith. Please come up.
Good evening, Board members. Hi. All the stories that I'm hearing are reiterating the same thing, whether it be students, whether it be parents, whether it be advocates, feeling that children are not safe within the school system. I am a mother of a six-year-old at School Fourteen, and I stand here in the same instance. I want to know who in this room can justify my child being spit on? Or who can justify someone, another student, telling my child that they would not play with her because she was black? These are things that have happened in the school. These are things that I have reported to the administrators. And from my standpoint, these things have been brushed under the rug. My daughter loved going to school, and she is now at the point where she does not want to go to school. I pulled her from school because of safety reasons. Some of the instances of things that has happened to her, it's not a complete list, but some of the things are on September nineteenth, she was hit in the mouth by one of her classmates. She was then hit on the head with a lunch bag by one of her classmates. She was bit on October tenth. October eleventh, she was poked in the eye and spit on. October sixteenth, she was smacked on both sides of her cheeks. October seventeenth, she was pushed up the stairs or down the stairs. October eighteenth, I sent a HIB letter saying that I wanted a HIB. There was no reply from the principal. On November twenty-first, she was dragged, a pencil was dragged across her hand. I was told that there was a... That the child had a bad day and that there was pushing. On December second, Nala was pushed in the chest to the point that she went to the nurse. She went to the nurse, asked to speak to me. When she called and talked to me about being pushed in the chest, I'm thinking it's a medical thing because I was not fully notified that a student pushed her in the chest. And that's why she was hurt. On December seventeenth, her shirt was pulled up and other students were told to look at her. On December eighteenth, a student pushed her out of the chair, which caused her to have a bruise on her hip. On February fifth, I sent a letter to school saying, to her teacher, saying that Nala has had an emotional breakdown. She does not wanna go to school. Please be gentle and allow her to hold her doll during the day. That very same day, one of her classmates grabbed her by the neck and pushed her down to the floor. As I said before, all of these things were brought up to administration. And I feel like things were being told to me to...
Ms. Claudette, thank you for your comments. The time has expired, but I do know that you will be meeting with the board later on to discuss these matters further. So thank you. Ms. Cassandra Smith? No? Okay. All right. Seeing that there is no more public comments, at this time, I close the public comic portion of this meeting, and the public portion has ended. So I know a lot of you heard a lot of comments this evening with a lot of diverse matters that are presented to the board. And one thing I wanna say, we have a number of students who came up here advocating about immigration rights and feeling safe in schools. I wanna share a little quick story with you and just want you to put this in perspective. We have a very diverse board that are all of immigrant families that come from diverse countries around the world that are all seeking the American dream and seeking to be safe. I think it's fair to say that I stand with this board to say that we empathize with you. We hear you. We feel your pain. And there are a lot of things that we cannot discuss publicly because of a lot of legal ramifications that the board cannot disclose, right? There are a lot of scenarios that you hear about that are not what they seem to be and not what you're actually hearing. They're all individual cases that are dealt with individually. The Board of Education prides itself and makes the safety of all students in all schools a major priority, including what the parents are talking about tonight. So we'll be able to talk to the parents. As with the students, if we can have one of the assistant superintendents also address the students as well so that you can further tell them some of your major concerns and what you're hearing and what some of the stories or scenarios that you're familiar with that may be impacting you directly, please talk to them about them. And I believe Ms. Assistant Superintendent Sedania will be addressing that right now. But nineteen sixty-nine, my father immigrated here from Haiti during a time where it was not safe for a black man to be in this country because of what was happening with the riots. And he immigrated from Haiti not knowing the language, not knowing where he was going to land, not knowing where he was going to live. So those are the stories that I grew up with. And I grew up as a child from immigrant families, seeking justice and seeking empowerment for not only my family but for people of color and people around the world that immigrated into this country. So this entire board has very similar stories of what their fabric has been and what they fight for every single day. So I want you to know that we empathize you. We hear your voice. We hear your cry. We stand with you. And we know that we are living in a time in this country where things feel a little bit unstable. We don't know what is about to happen or what's going to happen, but we know that we have each other. We have a district that cares. We have administrators that cares. And we have a community that will stand with you. So thank you for all those who expressed themselves tonight. I don't know if any of our other board members have any comments they'd like to make.
Yes, Mr. President, yes. Thank you for your words for our student and our community. It's not, most of the board members identify with yourself, especially when we arrive from different countries. And it's not, we want to let you know we care and we hear you and we listen to you, okay? And this is our priority, the security of our communities, our students. And our priority is educate yourself to be successful in this wonderful country. Thank you for your words this night. And as a teacher, I feel proud of you. Thank you, and good evening.
Mr. President, I would just like to address one of the concerns that were expressed by the students this evening and be able to provide some clarification. There was a reference that was made, and I hope I understood correctly. So please, if that was not what was communicated, please correct me. But there was a reference that an ICE agent had come to one of our high schools and you're nodding in agreement. So I wanna be very clear with regard to that. It is only our local police, our local Elizabeth police officers that are here this evening, in fact, in the back of the room, and I'd like to acknowledge them for the amazing work that they do each and every day in our community. The only officers that would be coming to our school would be our Elizabeth police officers. And to give you an example, as you know, I'm sure you hear from your principals, from all of your teachers with regard to the fact that vaping is not allowed in schools. When vaping does occur and that vape is confiscated by the building administrator, by the security guard, that is then turned over to our Director of Security, Mr. Glacken. At that point in time, the police arrive at our school in order to collect those vapes. That is one example of an Elizabeth police officer coming to one of our schools. A second reason would be if there is an incident that occurs and our principal calls the Elizabeth Police Department to request assistance. Other than that, you would not see a U.S. immigration officer in our schools. You would only see our Elizabeth police responding to our schools. I just wanted to make that clear. And especially if that's what you have internalized, if you thought that you had heard. It's important. I'm glad that you came here tonight to be able to voice your concerns, to share what your fears are, and know that we are here to support you. We love you very much, and also to be able to provide any clarification for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Okay, at this time, we're celebrating a very important month. And this month, we opened up, to conclude the opening of our calendar this evening, we'd like to present a spotlight video highlighting the initiative sponsored by board members Diane Barbosa and Eliana Chevres, which I have to say have the biggest hearts in the world. I couldn't have imagined any other commissioners that could do it the way they do it. And they celebrated autism acceptance month throughout the month of April. Throughout the Elizabeth Public Schools, we'll be promoting events and activities to show its support to those affected by autism spectrum disorder. And not only showing support to those affected by autism spectrum disorder. but also empathizing and building awareness and kindness around autism. Among those activities are Autism Acceptance Month bookmark, contests, and the Parent Appreciation Day that offers parents of students with autism the opportunity to receive manicures, facial treatments, shampoo, blowout, and a haircut from the Thomas A. Edison Career and Technical Academy College of Technology students. Can we give them a big round of applause for that? Because if you're a parent anyway, right, you have, you need a time off and you need a spa moment. So the fact that they were able to do that for those impacted by autism was amazing. Both of those activities were conceived and developed by board members Diane Barbosa and Shevres, who assisted the EPS team members and students. At this time, I'd like to present and highlight their video for Autism Acceptance Month.
Hi, I am Elizabeth Board of Education member Eliana Shevres.
And I'm Elizabeth Board of Education member Diane Barbosa.
It has been our great privilege to serve in our community as a member of the Elizabeth Board of Education. During the month of April, under the leadership of Board President Stanley J. Nero, it's our honor to sponsor and support Autism Acceptance Month activities and events throughout our schools in Elizabeth.
The Elizabeth Board of Education is always committed to recognizing and celebrating the unique personalities and character qualities of all those affected by autism spectrum disorder. We want to ensure they are learning the skills and knowledge necessary for them to become successfully contributing members to their community in adulthood.
Thank you for your continued support of all our students at the Elizabeth Public Schools.
Thank you, commissioners. On an amazing job this month, I was able to participate in a number of activities. Also, a full version of that video will be available at the end of this month on our website. So please tune into our website for more information on what's going on in our community as well as the special initiatives of our board members. At this time, I want to return the floor back to our superintendent schools who will present our community updates.
So, good evening, everyone. We're going to begin with our community updates for this evening. We'd like to begin with our scholarship and FAFSA nights that have been taking place since the month of February. Over the next few months, the Elizabeth Public Schools Department of Student Services will be hosting scholarship and FAFSA completion nights. School counselors will be available to assist our students with completing the FAFSA and applications for the upcoming scholarships, as well as allowing students where they may find additional scholarship opportunities. For those who plan to attend, we ask that you fill out the applications for scholarships, create a Going Merry account prior to attending, and log on to www.goinmerry.com. These, those who are attending to complete the FAFSA form should create a federal student aid or FSA ID prior to attending. And also, most importantly, please do not forget to bring your laptop to these sessions. Very important so that our counselors are able to assist with the completion of the FAFSA forms. And next, I'd like to turn to our high school registration, which was launched on April second. And in fact, today is the final day of our high school selection registration. Registration will be completed on Power School. We ask that students consult with their high school selection guide for more information about our schools, including eligibility requirements and special components of the registration process for certain schools. And if you haven't done so, please register this evening. And our Elizabeth residents, not currently attending the public schools, who wish to transfer to one of our high schools, should register for one of the eight high schools. So I think that our sessions have been incredibly well-attended by our eighth-grade students and their parents. And important decisions to be made with regard to where students will begin their career in their high school academy in ninth grade. Next slide, actually, I don't have to say next slide. I have control of my slides. Thank you. So we had launched a series of parent workshops last, this past month. And we're offering our families quite the variety. As you can see on the slide before you, we have topics such as keeping your children safe online, improving self-esteem, enhancing your education, self-improvement, building financial literacy in our youth. And these workshops are very convenient for our families because they're virtual. The link to the workshop is sent via text to all of our families as well as via email. And then, of course, you can certainly log on to our district webpage for more information regarding the availability of these workshops. As you can see, they run through June seventeenth and I encourage all of our families to participate. I want to commend our director, Sam Matian, for having coordinated these workshops and they are incredibly well-attended. Next, we're going to move into our student assessments update. And with that, some important dates regarding assessments. As you can see, we have the month, pretty much the month of May, from May fifth all the way up through May twenty-third, we have a series of assessments that will be administered. Everything from the dynamic learning maps to advanced placement exams to the state assessments such as NJSLA in all the content areas such as math, literacy, and science. And of course, at the end of this month, we have the administration of the SAT to our eleventh and twelfth grade students. So, parents, we ask that you mark your calendars. Important for our students to get their rest and a good breakfast and be ready to take their exams. Busy month coming up. Next, we'd like to be able to turn our attention to the remaining days of our Autism Acceptance Month calendar, which was created to support our families and community members as well as further educate our learning and greater communities. As you can see on our district webpage, we have posted our Autism Acceptance Month. It's filled with daily activities that parents can do with their children. It's an interactive calendar and you can find this on our webpage. And this is just a couple of screens showing you the variety of activities leading up to the end of the month. So next, we turn to our inside EPS and wanted to be able to acknowledge our Dwyer Technology Academy that was recently recognized as a NAF model academy. The academies are spotlighted for their excellent efforts in delivering high-quality educational experiences. NAF transforms the education in the classroom with personalized learning environments and career-focused curriculum to ensure our students are equipped for the future. And I did not move this slide. Ah, there we go, there we go. So wonderful opportunity to be able to recognize our Dwyer Academy for the wonderful experiences and curriculum they offer the students in order to better prepare them in a variety of fields of technology. Next, want to be able to acknowledge, once again, the successful college fair that was held. Over a hundred and thirty representatives from several states, universities, colleges, technical institutes, government agencies, and military, and it was very well-attended. Our students showed such excitement, types of questions that they were asking the recruiters were phenomenal. A great deal of information that was shared regarding scholarships, acceptance criteria, all of the offerings even, I would have to say, the representatives were very informative with regard to the reasons why you could even relocate to that particular state and the benefits of living from an economic standpoint. Wonderful opportunity. I think that it was an excellent job coordinated through our Student Services Department. Tremendous opportunities that were afforded on April eighth. Next, we would like to be able to acknowledge one of our teachers that was recognized by the New Jersey General Assembly during Women's History Month. Want to be able to acknowledge that our student, a teacher of student activities, Tatiana Gallego, who's an assistant coach of the Elizabeth Girls Varsity Flag Football Team, was recognized with a resolution by Assemblywoman Annette Kehanu in recognition for her contributions to the community. So, great opportunity to have one of our own recognized at the New Jersey General Assembly. Congratulations. And next, we move on. And one of our own, once again, recognized, Jesse Denly Roberts, Academy Principal, awarded the McLeod Bethune Award by the NCNW. So our principal, Arlene Campbell. Great opportunity to have been recognized at the Greater Elizabeth Area Section. The parent be breakfast, Dr. Bethune, founder, was an American educator, stateswoman, philanthropist, humanitarian, civil rights activist, best known for starting a private school for African-American students in Daytona Beach, Florida, and also co-founded the UNCF in nineteen forty-four with William Trent and Frederick Patterson. Our very own principal of school number thirty, Arlene Campbell, was honored for her distinguished career in education that spanned over four decades. Starting as a first-grade teacher, she also served as a teacher tutor, a reading specialist, vice-principal, and principal at school number thirty. So, special congratulations to our very own Arlene Campbell, principal of school thirty. And, oh, I think I moved a little bit too fast. There we go. Next, we have our William Halloran School Twenty-two students that were selected as winners of the annual Children's Dental Health Month poster contest. This is a statewide opportunity for students to participate and be able to design their own posters. And they were recognized by the New Jersey Academy of Pediatric Dentistry. So, congratulations to our students, two fourth-grade students that were selected as winners this school year. Fantastic opportunity. And then lastly, we want to be able to provide a glimpse into the month of May and the important dates that are coming up. We're beginning the month with School Principals' Day on May first. Moving right into Teacher Appreciation Week, National Teacher Week, National Nurses Week, National School Nurses' Day, Mother's Day, our Haitian Flag Day, our Cuban Flag Day, Memorial Day, Better Speech and Hearing Month, our Asian Pacific Heritage Month, our Haitian-American Heritage Month, our Portugal Heritage Month, our Mental Health Awareness Month, Kindness Awareness Month, and our National Military Appreciation Month. So although we have testing for the, pretty much the entire month of May, I am sure that our teachers will be able to squeeze in some special opportunities at the end of a week in order to ensure that our children have the opportunity to celebrate these important dates. And that completes our community updates report. And then next, I'd like to turn to our performance report for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Not sure if we're ready to, you always are. Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you very much. So I'm going to provide a brief overview of our report. School performance reports are put out by the New Jersey Department of Education each year and they report on the previous year's data. The school performance reports for the twenty-three, twenty-four became available at the beginning of April and are intended to provide communities with a broad picture of the schools in their district. These reports can be found on NJSchoolData.org. And they're available at our district webpage, on the district homepage, and each school's homepage as well. You can find the resources under Students and Families. So the reports essentially include hundreds of data points about schools and districts in New Jersey. And that can include demographic information, student growth, academic achievement, graduation rates, and school accountability. The twenty-three, twenty-four reports include changes that respond to feedback, federal and state requirements, and also, most importantly, data availability. It can include chronic absenteeism, seal of belligerency, visual and performing arts data, additional information on student discipline, as well as high school persistence and graduation rates. Through the reports, you'll see a variation of trend data, or you'll see a single-year data depending on the data set. And in some instances, you will see a comparison to statewide data as well. The table at the bottom of the slide shows a change in our demographics, most notably an increase in our population of English learners from twenty-six point eight in twenty-one, twenty-two to thirty-three point one in twenty-three, twenty-four. And as you can see, this population continues to grow. More than thirty-four percent of our students are multilingual learners. Student growth is important because it measures how well our students are learning each year. And each student gets a student growth percentile from one to ninety-nine in English Language Arts and Math that explains their progress compared to students who had similar scores in the past. Student growth data is not available for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year due to federal waivers and assessment cancellations as a result of COVID. However, you're able to see the data for twenty-two, twenty-three through twenty-three, twenty-four. So, in order to interpret the data that you see before you, and as you, you'll see various points that we're going to be going through the presentation. And this is how it is presented throughout the course of the report. So when they refer to the median student growth percentile, want to be able to provide some specific points for you. If it's before thirty, below thirty-five, that means low growth. If it's between thirty-five and sixty-five, that indicates typical growth. And if it's above sixty-five, then that indicates high growth. So that you, you're able to see typical growth as it relates to our student growth percentile. For ELA, it's fifty-two, it grew to sixty in twenty-three, twenty-four, and in math, from fifty-two grew to forty-nine, right? So that, both are representative of typical growth. In comparison to the state, that essentially was flat, fifty to fifty in both categories. School performance reports contain information about student participation and performance on statewide assessments, including a variety of assessments such as the NJSLA, the ACCESS, DLM, and NJGPA, which is for our eleventh-grade students. Here's another example of assessment results. And you'll see in the first row of the table, you can see that we have a high participation rate, but nearly all students scheduled to take assessment, assessments, and they are participating. And as a reminder, our students in grades three through nine are required to participate in both the English Language Arts Assessment as well as the Math Assessment. As you can see, the gap between our performance and that of the state in English Language Arts remains at about a six percentage points year after year. And the gap in math is a little bit larger, but also remains consistent. Graduation rate is the percent of students who completed high school in four years and also reported for students who complete high school within five years. Once, one of the requirements for a high school diploma is the ability to pass a graduation assessment or an alternative assessment, both of which are measured by the state and federal government. Next slide, we have now our graduation rates for federal reporting and accountability. So the federal version aligns to the New Jersey Department of Education. It's used for accountability purposes. The state version continues to use the same methodology it used prior to twenty-twenty-one and it reflects all students who received a state-endorsed diploma. It's important to note that these required federal changes only change how graduation rates are calculated for federal reporting and accountability. These changes do not affect requirements to earn a diploma. Right now, the federal and state are both aligned. Next, we have our state graduation rates. And as you can see, our four-year graduation rate continues to increase and the gap is closing between our graduation rate and that of the state as a whole. Incredibly happy to celebrate, right, class of twenty-twenty-four achieved an eighty-nine percent graduate, four-year graduation rate. As you know, we always talk about our goals for our organization and always striving for ninety percent of our graduates to graduate on time. Our next slide refers to the federal graduation rates. And as you can see, when we look at the students from COVID twenty-two, after six years, which is now what the federal government is measuring, they're not only measuring four-year graduates and five-year graduates, they're now measuring six-year graduates. And that pertains in particular to our students that may be attending an added district school, a special needs school, that may require additional time as a result of additional supports that are required. After six years, eighty-one point one percent of the students graduated. Cohorts twenty-three and twenty-four have surpassed that with on-time graduation rates and fifth-year graduation rates. Next, we have chronic absenteeism and attendance, and chronic absenteeism is being absent for ten percent or more of the days enrolled during the school year. As our rate of students who are chronically absent consistently declines, it's noteworthy that the gap between Elizabeth Public Schools in the state is less than one percentage point. And I want to give credit to our principals because they submit chronic absenteeism plans every single year. We review that with regard to the types of activities, incentives, communications with parents stressing the importance of attendance, and it clearly yields very positive results for our district. Here, you'll see the chronic absentee rate for students in pre-K through twelve in the district in dark blue and the state in light blue. Overall, our rate is similar to that of the state as a whole. In most grade levels, we are within one to three percentage points of the state, with the outliers being pre-K and grade twelve at eight percentage points. Next, you see the chronic absenteeism for students in pre-K twelve. In the district, it's dark blue, and the state is light blue. Overall, our chronic rate is similar to that of state as a whole. In most grade levels, we're within one to three percentage points of the state, with the outliers, once again, being pre-K twelve and eight. College and Career Readiness reports show information about college entrance exams, advanced coursework such as AP and CTE programs, and the last indicator in the chart is the number of percent of students earning a seal of belligerency. The New Jersey Seal of Belligerency is an award given by the New Jersey Department of Education in recognition for students who have studied and attained proficiency in at least one language in addition to English by high school graduation. Seventeen point three percent of our twelfth graders earned a seal of belligerency, with less than ten percent of twelfth graders across the state earning this distinguished seal. Next, you see another indicator, which is a visual and performing arts, and you're able to see how well it is that we are preparing our students, and that's by the enrollment in the various courses. Next slide is with regard to student safety, and this is another data set that's reported on the school performance reports, and it's under Violence, Vandalism, and HIV Reporting. We're seeing a positive trend as our violence, vandalism, and HIBs are all lower than in twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three. Substances are down in twenty-three, twenty-four from a sharp spike in twenty-two, twenty-three. Next, we'll talk about our early childhood program in the district, and I'd like to highlight here that there are still many districts in New Jersey that continue to provide half-day programs for pre-K and kindergarten. All of our pre-K and K students are serviced for full-day classes, and I'd like to point out that our pre-K enrollment, although has been impacted slightly this year, we have nearly three thousand three hundred students enrolled in our three- and four-year-old programs. Next slide is with regard to our student supports and services, and as you can see, a listing of the student and staff ratios, right? Students to teachers, students to administrators, teachers to administrators, and the list goes on as it relates to the different special areas such as media specialists, nurses, counselors, child study teams, psychologists, social workers, and safety specialists. I think we take tremendous pride in keeping our admin costs low so that we can ensure that we are funding areas that are most important, such as counselors, child study teams, nurses, psychologists, social workers. Next is our school accountability. New Jersey's ESSA School Accountability System provides a formula to determine a summative score, which is based on various measures of progress, academic achievement, progress towards English language proficiency, and student success as measured by chronic absenteeism. So what is targeted support? Schools identified as in need of targeted support for one or two reasons. Either they need additional targeted support and improvement for a low-performing student group with a score in the bottom five percent of Title One schools across New Jersey, or targeted support and improvement for a consistently underperforming student group identified as missing annual targets or missing standards for all indicators for two consecutive years. These are the two areas. And then, of course, the last category, comprehensive support school, which could be for one of three reasons. Either an overall low performing, meaning that they have a summative score in the bottom five percent of all Title One schools across the state, or they have a low graduation rate, meaning that their overall graduation rate was sixty-seven percent or less, or the, or the third category, chronically low performing student, meaning that the school was identified in need of additional targeted support for three or more consecutive years. So those are the categories. And so now, let's turn to the data for our district, and considering we have thirty-seven schools, we're incredibly pleased with the progress that our district has made because we only have one school in targeted status, and we have one school that is in comprehensive status for a low graduation rate but making tremendous strides in that area. So incredibly proud of the hard work and efforts of all of our principals in our district, and it clearly shows in the designation by the U.S. Department of Education. So our last slide, so what happens next? Schools are identified for support and improvement, work in partnership with their educational community, with their parents, with the New Jersey Department of Education, and they need to assess those needs related to their areas of weakness. They have to identify strategies and resources that can impact improvement. They have to create an annual plan as well, and they have to outline the specific activities and steps they're going to take in order to make the necessary improvement. They have to have a timeline of completion, and they have to understand the steps needed to be removed from status. So overall, I believe that the, although a year, we're talking about a year that has already concluded, we clearly have made tremendous improvements in a variety of areas, as we can see, and, sorry, I've been losing my voice, specifically in terms of the growth of all of our students in all the tested grades. It is evident in exemplary work by our principals, by our vice principals, by all of our teachers in our district who work diligently to provide the instruction and those necessary interventions in order to ensure our children make the necessary progress. And that completes the requirement by the New Jersey Department of Education to present the school performance reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Thank you for reviewing the progress and giving us community updates to see a lot of the activities that the district is engaging in and participating in and providing our families and parents, especially with the, the parent workshops that are offered online. Very few districts do that, so thank you for all those initiatives and to our director, H. Chen. Want to thank him as well for his efforts, and thank you for giving us an overview of the progress our district is making. We've done a lot of work over the years to do deep data dives to address some of those numbers, and we see the progress that is taking place. So I want to thank our entire board and all our administration for all the work that they've put forth in making our performance actually become a, not only a performance, but a progress report, to see the progress that we're making in our district. At this time, I'd like to review-
Excuse me, Mr. President. May I have some comments about our superintendent report at this time?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. As a board member, we establish goals, and today, I'm happy, like, as a board member, we achieve two goals. One is increase our graduation rate, and also, when we analyze data, is the absentee does mean is, I want to say, thank you to our board members, you know, is a lot of data analyzed behind the scenes. Is one of us analyze, get together in different committees, and today, we have the numbers to prove our community. We have increase in our graduation rate, and also, we have fifty percent of our students who take AP classes. It's, it's not easy. It's a hard work and dedication from our staff, administration, and, and as an AP teacher, I know how hard it is. Does mean today, our community, I want to explain, our superintendent bring the proof to the community and to our board member, we show the proof with numbers by the state like we achieve our goals like we promised to you. Thank you, and it's a great night for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Jacobs.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to echo your comments on the parent involvement workshops. I attended one of the sessions early this month that was online, and there was quite good attendance, especially doors considering the format was during the evening. It was a very informative session done in a bilingual fashion. But focusing on Dr. Hugo Meyer's report on our school assessments, I first want to thank, along with my colleague, Commissioner Morena Ortega, Dr. Hugo Meyer under her leadership, along with the assistant superintendents, our teachers, our principals, our entire administration and staff, in trying to ensure that all of our students are receiving a free and appropriate education. Also, I'd like to thank Dr. Hugo Meyer for sending this report out in advance for us to be able to look at it and ask questions at the meeting. One thing that struck out, that stood out to me was the fact that our student growth in ELA exceeded the state by ten points between two, twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four. We're not seeing the same growth in math, but we know statewide that there still is an issue with math, but that was very encouraging to see that after the pandemic, we are starting to see, we're starting to return to the levels of growth that we were experiencing before the pandemic. I know, also know that our governance expert is watching, and hopefully, these are some of the issues that we can talk about when we go into our retreats as focusing on board goals, to make sure that we are trying as board members to make sure that all of our children are receiving the best education. I also noticed in the report the focus on chronic absenteeism. We've seen the fact that chronic absenteeism rates have increased dramatically after the pandemic. We can see in the data that was presented that grades K through five and grades nine through twelve, we are trending above the state in those categories. And in, but in middle school, those grades were trending below the state. So it's interesting, be interesting for us to know, why are we doing so much better with that group of children versus when they get to high school, it starts to increase again? We all understand that it's a different issue with the younger children because of the fact that they're younger, they may be dealing with sicknesses, whatever the case may be. But it's, is, if we start to come out of the downward spiral in middle school, how come we can't get those same results in high school? Even though high school is a whole nother animal to deal with, I think it's something that we, as a board, need to make sure that we look at and make sure that the practices that are being implemented by the district are being followed and that certain supervision is being done. The next thing that I also noticed that I was also impressed was the number, the percentage of students enrolled in visual and performing arts in our district, in our district is our testament in supporting the creative side of our students, and it's not, you know, we all know that, that we're here to learn the ABCs and the one-two-threes, but that there's more to education than just the books and the numbers, that we also have to create that other side of our students to make them well-rounded individuals going forward in life. The other, oh, something that my colleague, Commissioner Rosa Martino Ortega, commented on the fact that we are extremely exceeding the number of eleventh and twelfth-grade students enrolled in AP classes at fifty point four percent, which is an outstanding number, but I also want to point out the fact that we can also, as a board, lose focus on our underperforming students to make sure that all of our students are being, are able to graduate on a timely basis, which leads us into also our graduation percentage, which is still somewhat lagging slightly below the statewide average at eighty-nine percent. Hopefully, as a board, we can look at what measures we can try to implement in our board goals to try to improve those numbers, but I am applauding the fact that there has been a steady increase over the past eleven years incrementally, us increasing our graduation rate, which is a good thing, but of course, we always have to keep striving for better. And lastly... Oh, lastly, I also want to comment that Elizabeth High School was ranked, based on these state summative scores, was ranked thirty-five in the state, which is a testament to the work that's being done. I do have a question for Madam Superintendent. Is School Twenty-Eight and Edison the only schools that are in status?
That is correct. School Twenty-Eight, that is in targeted status, and Edison as in comprehensive status. The only two schools, yes.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hugo Meyer. So I think that's also a testament, because as we've known in the past, we've had a number of our schools in status before, and us being able to work diligently as far as the principals, the teachers, the administration, and working with the New Jersey Department of Education to get our, to get our schools out of status is very important, and I think it's a testament of the education that we are trying to provide here at the Elizabeth Public School Systems. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. Any other commissioners? Seeing none, hearing none, at this time, we'd like to review our agenda. Thank you for those comments. In reviewing the agenda, we'd like to go over tab one A, Official Private Minutes, February twentieth and March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Are there any questions or comments? Yes. Yeah, March eighteen. Seeing none, hearing none, Ms. Kenny, please add tab one A to the agenda. Tab one B, Treasures Report, February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, hearing none, please add tab one A and one B to the agenda. Tab two A, Personnel Report. Are there any questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes.
The question is not for Mr. Questa, is for the administration to decide, it's, I'm sorry, two A, page nineteen, for my board member reference. And page two A, table two A, page nineteen, is about lunchtime tutoring, like, it is amazing. I want to make sure, Madam Superintendent, I see some school who they receive thirty minutes, you know, support, three times per day. I love it. How they select the, the schools in this lunch support, like, is three times per day?
The schools are selected because our schools receive Title One funding. That is one of the suggested activities that are coordinated for our schools, so essentially, every single school has the opportunity to participate and offer lunchtime tutoring, and then the students are identified based on need.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I have a question. For tab two, page fifteen, I see that there is back salary for two years. Can you tell me why? And that question is to Mr. Questa.
Page fifteen, you said?
Yes.
Under-
Business office.
Business office. Yeah, that, that is a mistake that was made, and it has been corrected. You're talking about a salary, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that person was serving as a head custodian for two years and never got a, a correct salary?
That's correct. It was brought to our attention, we looked into it, and we realized that it had been a mistake. So we, we are attempting to correct that mistake right now.
Oh, thank you. We don't make that mistake often, do we?
No, we do not.
Thank you. That's it.
That was a trick question.
Mr. President, I forgot one question.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not for Mr. Questa, but it's in this part. It's not for Mr. Questa, it's for this administration to design the, this is page twenty. We have Saturday NJSLA for our community is preparation for the state test. It's on Saturday from eight fifteen to one fifteen. Is a liberated student, everybody can be part of that program, or we pick a student who is low performance?
It's based on teacher recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Mr. President?
Yes. Yes.
I just want to turn attention to page seven. And when I was going through our retirements, I just, I had to point it out that, and congratulate the passion that a lot of teachers, certified staff, administrators, secretaries, assistants, they have been here 27, 36, 40 years, 36.9, 35 years, amazing. And I, you know, thank you for their service because that's a long time in, in one particular district, in one particular job, so it has to not be, go unnoticed. Thank you for your service to the Elizabeth Public Schools.
Thank you, Commissioner, for highlighting that. We were proud to highlight during Women's History Month, a lot of our women who served 40-plus years. So it's definitely an honor and we salute all those who dedicate their lives to education because it's not easy. And thank you for your service. Any other commissioners on Tab 2A?
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Jacobs.
First, I'd like to piggyback off of Commissioner Moreno Ortega's comment on Saturday NJSLA and put a question to the Ed Management Committee in reference to the NJSLA program as well as the Saturday Attendance Recovery Program. Is follow being done to ensure that students who may be selected based on a teacher recommendation, if they are not attending those programs, then are we also making sure that students who may want to participate but may not selected have been chosen to attend those programs or be eligible to participate? So I'd like to make sure that we just put that, I don't expect any answers today, but that we just put that for Ed Management possible?
When we submit our plans to the New Jersey Department of Education, we have to adhere to the criteria. The criteria that has been submitted and approved by the New Jersey Department of Education is to ensure that we are offering these programs to our students that are struggling in the areas of English Language Arts and Mathematics. We are also responsible for providing the, as an accountability to the State Department, we are responsible for providing their performance and ensuring that all the recruitment efforts are made to ensure that our population of students that are the neediest are participating in the programs. So that, that is the criteria that we have to adhere to. There are different interventions that are offered to all students, so we afford that to students that may not be eligible to attend the Saturday program, may benefit differently in small group instruction during the school day.
So just to make sure I understand you clearly on that. So I understand you're saying that there's certain criteria that we have to make sure that we abide by and making sure that we service all of our students. However, being that these, this is a voluntary program and that we may not get the same attendance, a full attendance on running the program, are we not also then looking at students who may not necessarily be on the cusp of these services that we're not providing the services?
I will gladly provide the board a report so you're able to see the number of students and the regular attendance at the programs and in terms of who is eligible to participate. Be happy to provide that.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Also, I'd like to put a motion on the floor to Table, Tab 2A, page 24, the last item, initials JAST.
We're not on Tab 2A yet, are we?
Here we are.
Oh, second.
A motion has been made and properly seconded. Ms. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Just to clarify, talking 2A, page 24, first item, last entry with the initials JAST, only that line.
Vote is Barbosa? Carvallo. Chevres.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Moreno Ortega.
Yes.
Gunkavas Pastana.
Yes.
Rivera.
Yes.
Naron.
Yes. Tab 3, Tuitions Report. Any comments or questions? Board members, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, hearing none. Tab 4, 4D, Superintendent's Report.
Madam, excuse me, Mr. President.
Yes.
I have a question for Tab 4A.
Yes, Madam Commissioner.
This is to Mr. Didenado. Hey. So for, for number, number one, number two, excuse me, I like it, thank you for the different opportunities. Number three, I don't see your name on this, but I just wanted to know where did the budget come from? And is that under Dorothy? Dorothy, I don't know if it's under these. Number three.
Item three, is that for the forensics team?
Yes.
That is part of the high school's budget. So every year when we sit with our high school principals, we go through the various costs and the forensics club is a very popular club with students and we account for their travel cost as well.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Number five, are they spending the night? For the cost $4,000?
Yes, they are. Yes, there's a waiver included in the board report.
Oh, it says only May 23rd. If they're spending the night, would it not go to the next day?
I will gladly check on that, but I believe so. I'll double check that for you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. President, I have more questions. Tab 4, Bean. Oh, no, nope, I don't have that. Oh, I'm done, thank you.
You good?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any additional questions? Seeing none, hearing none, Ms. Kennedy?
Mr. President, are you speaking, I can comment on 4C too?
4 to 4D, yes.
Okay, 4C. 4C is filtrates consideration. I just want to highlight 128 filtrates we have. It is amazing. Not every district has this amount of filtrate and different variety from busy environment, analyze how food grow, be able to interact with news swell about the weather report and everything. This mean I want to really highlight and say thank you for the principals and also teachers because remember, this is not mandatory by control, like the teacher attend filtrate. It's because they want, they willing to, and it's 128 filtrates and happy, I just want to highlight that part. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Moreno. Madam Superintendent.
Ms. Bathless, under 4A considerations, the backup shows that for item number five, Hershey Park, it is a same-day trip.
Moving on from 4 to 4D, Mr. Kennedy, please add Tab 4D, 4 to 4D to the agenda. At this time, we're reviewing 5 and 5A. Are there any questions from the board?
Mr. President, before we just move forward to Tab 5, can I just move backward for a quick second? I would like to table Tab 2A, please.
Need a motion? The entire tab?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I need a motion.
Is that the bring back after? You have your second.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to Table Tab 2A, sorry.
I just need you to say it.
Yeah, and you have a second, yes. Sorry about that.
Okay, motion has been made, properly seconded. Roll call, please, Mr. Kennedy.
Mr. President, what part is a motion? Can you repeat? Okay, thank you.
Entire Tab 2A. Ms. Kennedy?
Bathless. Carvallo.
Yes.
Chevres.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Moreno Ortega.
Yes.
Gunkavas Pastana.
Yes.
Rivera.
Yes.
Naron.
Yes. All right. Move forward to Tab 5, 5A, Authorizations Report. Any questions from the board?
No questions, but, Mr. President?
Yes.
Just a comment on Tab 5, page 4. Although the Department of Labor has decreased some of the funding, I think this is an opportunity for our administration to really focus on making sure that these adults can receive the proper ESL and GED and really tone in on those 19 participants and make sure that we can guarantee that these 19 participants get the full access of this service.
Thank you for bringing light to that, Commissioner. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, absolutely. Dr. Mosley runs our program in collaboration with Union College, and we will ensure that since the funding only supports 19 participants, we will ensure that their attendance is regular and that they are able to maximize all of the offerings in our school, definitely.
Thank you. Authorizations Report, any additional questions? Seeing none.
Sorry, Mr. President, yes, I'm getting to my tabs, excuse me, I organized myself. I, oh no, hold on. Okay, I just want to take college page number nine and that we are accepting the 23 donated instruments. I thought that was very cool, and I just want to say thank you to that. I also wanted to say that I love the fact that we, on page 10, that we're getting donations of 25 five-gallon buckets so that we can do a drumming program. I participated in something like that. It's really cool, really fun. So I just want to acknowledge that. Lastly, I noticed that we have a revised vision of the 2024-2025 school calendar year. Did we approve the 2025-2026 revised calendar year?
Mr. President?
No, not yet.
Okay, but it's coming, correct?
Next meeting.
Oh, thank you so much. I just want to make sure I didn't miss it.
You didn't miss it.
And that those changes will be here. Thank you.
Sure. Madam Superintendent?
I was going to echo the same statements. Mr. Kennedy responded before I could.
Sorry.
Thank you. Oh, shoot.
Tab 5A, 5B, 5, 5 and 5A. Any additional questions, Commissioners? I think it's safe to move forward. Okay. Tab 6, 6A, Finance and Accounting Report. Are there any questions from the board?
I had just an observation, Mr. President.
Sure.
Item 32, for some reason, the amount and total is not there.
I'm so sorry, repeat that question?
In the item 32 to Tab 6.
Tab 6, which line?
32.
Oh, 32, okay.
Yeah, I noticed the amount and total is not there, is by mistake or is for some specific reason?
Ms. Kennedy, is that they were, as an error? Or is there supposed to be an amount there?
It's an error, there's, they didn't submit.
So that shouldn't be there.
It shouldn't be there.
Thank you.
So please omit that line 32, please. Commissioners, any other questions or concerns regarding finance and accounting, 6, 6A? Seeing none, hearing none, moving on to Award of Contract Reports, 7 and 7A.
Yes, Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner?
This question is for Mr. Didenado now. Item on page 3 for King University, how many students are participating? I don't see the number of students there.
So they're still recruiting, but it's up to 250 students from those eight schools.
Oh, and how were the students or how were the schools selected?
So the State Department selected the schools that could participate and Gear Up is going into those schools to actively recruit, have parent meetings, and so far right now, we have 96 kids signed up.
Excellent, and when we get to 250, it'll stop?
Correct.
All right, thank you so much. I have another question, Mr. President.
Yes.
For Mr. Malanis on page 6. So, so 1, 2, 3, 4, 4 down, it says that these schools are going to be getting an additional video coverage security. Do all of our schools in the district have proper video security coverage? Thank you.
This is part of a grant.
Okay.
So this is part of the COPS grant. So this is to enhance another project that we had, so we adding this, you know, we buying the materials to do that.
Next time, can you add that here so that I don't have to bother, you can just say it's part of the grant, blah, 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 blah. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I have an observation in page A, and actually nine, the recommendation from Dr. Michelle Panichi, Christian Boweish Academy, they have a few workshop to don't have calls for students to safety, which I think is so important. And also about like social skills for children with autism to, I would like to consider it to bring to other schools because it's no-cost workshop. And the same in page 10, Dr. Mona Wines from Jefferson Academy, she has a workshop focused on self-care for the staff and it's no-cost, which I think that's something to, is a great idea to implement in other schools.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing light to that, Commissioner.
Mr. President?
Madam Superintendent, can we consider that?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just took note of both recommendations, absolutely.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes, top 7, page 3, the question is for Director of Student Services. Very interesting is the agree, I want to, you know, later, you can give the board some information, the agreement between Rocket University and the district for the nurses' roles and responsibility of the university to our student be complete, some clinical experiences, especially for the student who want to become nurse. If, you know, assume we have the agreement, I want to make sure why we offer that one student, why we offer because it's a lot of parents and students who sometime they ask, and it's interesting to know how, how we define and how we look like that agreement between the university and our schools.
This is actually for students, for students at Rutgers to come and do clinical supervision within our school, similar to student teachers. We have student nurses, so this is the articulation agreement for that. It's not for students within the Elizabeth Public Schools.
Okay. Next time, can you please clarify that part?
Will do.
Thank you, appreciate.
Are there any additional questions, Commissioners? Seeing none, hearing none, Ms. Kennedy, can you please add Tab 7 and 7A to the agenda? At this time, we'd love to hear from our Student Representative Report presented by Ms. Josiah Holly. Commissioner Holly, you have the floor.
Greetings and good evening to all of our guests. First and foremost, I would like to thank Dr. Hugemager, Superintendent of Schools, and the Elizabeth Public Schools Board Commissioners for this special opportunity that I'm very grateful for. My name is Josiah Holly, and I'm the Student Representative for J. Christian Boweish Finance Academy. I'm the Senior President of the Student Council and Vice President of Student Government. and vice president of Student Government. My biggest accomplishment this year was being awarded the Union County's Unsunk Hero Award. I am beyond excited to graduate in a few months on the track to finish with one-hundred-and-fifty-plus community service hours and a four-point-O GPA, and I'm preparing to take my next steps as a future student at North Carolina A&amp;T. As a student representative of J. Christian Bowes Finance Academy, I help organize and have a voice in planning events for our school. Our school year kicked off with a back-to-school night where the J. Christian Bowes Finance Academy Student Planted Events, Student Success Center scholars led seminars for ninth-grade students to focus on school-wide AVID strategies regarding time management skills and organization skills. We recognized Breast Cancer Awareness Month with a celebration, writing notes that were delivered to Trinitas Hospital, an event covered by News Twelve. During Hispanic Heritage Month, we engaged in dance events to celebrate our diverse cultures. We also organized collections and donations for things given in partnership with St. Joseph and Elizabeth Coalition for the Homeless. The Veterans Breakfast was a meaningful occasion for honoring those who served our country. Throughout the year, we hosted monthly parent training seminars and information sessions alongside PTO meetings that focus on college and career readiness for student safety. Highlights included an entrepreneurship workshop, family fitness nights, FASFA workshops, and discussions surrounding social media safety, vaping dangers, and cybersecurity presented by the New Jersey State Police. In December, we celebrated our American Period Scholars with a breakfast and organized a Toys for Tots collection with Halsey Academy and the U.S. Marine Corps. Students and parents participated in scholarship and FASFA workshops both during and after school hours. We held a Black History Civic Roundtable with community representatives and celebrated Black History Month with an Icon Day and Islamic Heritage Events. The Women of Wisdom Breakfast was another enriching experience. Eighth graders received guidance through counselor tours and participated in Read Across America in School Fourteen. Instant Decision Day and a series of visits to various schools for selection process helped facilitate their transition to high school. We promoted health and wellness through monthly fitness nights for students and parents, as well as hosting variety of Autism Awareness Month events, including Game Day and a breakfast featuring daily encouraging foods. Monthly highlights included trips to Deloitte and L'Oréal as part of our NAP program, presentations by the CPA Association and a local credit union, and collaborations with the Elizabeth Police Department focusing on student safety. The Bad Lonnie Murrow and Bike Safety Campaign engaged tenth-grade driver education students in walkability audits, while the UC Step and Mental Health Presentations offer vital support for our students' well-being. We also celebrated SCL initiatives promoting Nutrition Months and events that support, that foster community spirit, including a positive retreat and random acts of kindness. The Bowes Zenden was fostered, was added to the guidance suite for a calming atmosphere. AVID walkthroughs provided valuable insights during school visits, and we organized a prom dress giveaway to support our students in need. Additionally, we planned trips to colleges such as Princeton and JCU, TC&amp;J, UTI, and William Patterson, as well as visits to colleges' fairs at Woodbridge High School and performances at King University. Our students ventured to the Washington Liberty Science Center as part of our educational experience. The autism program also organized friendly outings to Stop and Shop, a bowling alley, and a mall scavenger hunt. Our Skill Life Program engaged students in creating recipes and helping them to wash clothes for the school community. Finally, we conducted panorama school culture surveys for students and parents and held monthly diversity events, fostering an inclusive learning environment. District-wide, Elizabeth Public Schools student athletes and their families attended the Athletic Winter Season Sports Award on April second to celebrate the remarkable achievements this season. All Elizabeth Public School juniors shared the opportunity to attend the college fair on April ninth at Dunn Sports Center. The college fair was a great opportunity for juniors to speak to colleges' representatives about applying to college and getting some extensive information they may need in the future. A proactive prom safety campaign will be hosted for all seniors at their academies after spring break. In addition to the events at J. Christian Bowes Finance Academy and district-wide, our individual academies have many wonderful experience to highlight wonderful events. Admiral William Halsey Health and Public Safety Academy had a phenomenal month with EMT students passing their NREM T exam and receiving EMT certification. Frank J. Sicarrelle Academy is organizing their annual Relay for Life, where students raise money and stay overnight at the school, walking around the building in honor of those who are fighting cancer or have passed away from it. John E. Dewey Technology Academy is focused on a No One Eats Alone celebration while also planning their upcoming senior events. Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy is celebrating its one-hundred-year Sentinel Celebration and is visiting different middle schools to teach younger students about various subjects. JVJ STEM Academy celebrated Women's History Month by hosting a special brunch for all senior girls and presenting at the district board meeting to highlight Elizabeth schools named after influential women. Additionally, Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy participated in Skills USA, a worldwide competition in showcasing students' work, and they proudly took home the first-place award. Additionally, on April eleventh and twelfth, Thomas Edison Career and Technical Academy welcomed students with special needs to the cosmetology room, offered them a variety of services. These events highlight the strong sense of community and the commitment of our schools to support their students. That's all I have for tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. You covered a lot that we couldn't say because we can't be everywhere, but we thank you for covering all what's happening in our high schools and in our community. I think it warms our hearts as Commissioners to see the work that's happening, not only in our schools but in our community, and the energy that our staff and our students are exemplifying in our district. It's incredible, and I could remember getting here twelve years ago and wanting to do that and wanting to see more of that in our community, and I think it's finally come to fruition. And we have tons of room to grow and continually becoming even better than where we are today. So thank you for that, and thank you for joining us this month and for being our student representative. We appreciate you. Great job. Let's give her another big round of applause. All right. Next, we want to hear from our committees, our Special Education Committee with our Chairwoman, Commissioner Eliana Shevres.
Thank you, Mr. President. Special Education Committee met on April third at noon at twelve. The committee discussed the events carried on for the Autism Awareness Month, including a self-care day at the Thomas Edison Career and Technical Academy for our students, parents, and CPAD member on April tenth and eleven. Our cosmetology students provided services that include manicure, facial, and haircut to parents. Parents had the opportunity to enjoy snacks and refreshment prepared by the culinary arts students. In addition, all fourth grade through sixth grade students district-wide had the opportunity to participate in the Autism Acceptance Bookmark Contest. Do I think everybody had one bookmark? Where students had the opportunity to promote the understanding and acceptance of autistic individuals. The winning entry will be announced in May and displayed on our website. Lastly, an Autism Acceptance Month calendar filled with daily activity was shared on the district calendars. Parents' workshop, including guardianship presented by the Union County Service Office on Wednesday, March twenty-sixth. Additional events include Saturday Autism Awareness Events, on Saturday, Eduardo and Ango Park on April fifth, Saturday Soccer Athletic Cleaning, Nicholas Morai Ballet, School Number Twenty-third, Saturday Recreation Program at George Washington Academy School Number One, Saturday Special Olympic Celebration, Special Olympic Bowling, and the oncoming Special Olympic Track and Field scheduled for Sunday, April twenty-seven, in Old Bridge, New Jersey. The final event for the school year will be a Parent Resource Fair that will be announced shortly and will take place at the Dunn Sports Center. The committee discussed the status of the district budget that has been submitted to NJ DOE on March nineteenth, and is forced underway to address the thirty-seven back-end seat position. Lastly, the committee finalized the reviews of the CPAD policy and refer it to the Legal Committee for future discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, we have our Negotiations Committee Report, presented by Chairperson Commissioner Jerry Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Negotiations Committee met on April fourth. The committee reviewed the U.S. Department of Education and Secretary of Education's March twenty-eighth letter advising of the rescission of extensions of the liquidation of ARP funds. The district had filed an application for late liquidation on July fourth, July first, 2024, and was approved in the amount of sixteen-point-two million dollars to complete facility improvements for univentilator replacement and ventilation upgrades at twenty-two district schools. The ventilation projects have continued to progress, and during the period July 2024 through March 2025, Elizabeth has paid eleven-point-five million, leaving an outstanding balance of four-point-seven million. The committee discussed remedies sought by the New Jersey Department of Ed and their strategies committed to districts statewide to recoup rescission amounts owed to the district. I also would like to add that during my comments during last month's meeting when we were adopting our budget, we had mentioned the fact that we were anticipating cuts next year, not this year, relating to our Title I, Title II, Title III funds. As we can see, as it happened, we are now faced with that dilemma this year. It is encouraging to see that the state, the state's AG has joined twenty-two other states to sue the U.S. Department of Education to recoup these funds because of the fact that, at that time, we had gotten approval from the U.S. Department of Education to continue to spend these funds. These funds were also part of our ESIP program that we initiated in 2021 to improve the ventilation systems in our schools and of that nature. Due to supply chain errors, supply chain backlogs after the pandemic is one of the reasons why it was pushed out. I'm glad to report that Mr. Malanis and along with Mr. Kennedy and Dr. Hugemeyer are all still on track to get these projects completed for our children, but it just makes us all aware of the precarious situation that we are in, especially when it comes to our funding from the federal government. I think it's also important for us to keep our eye on the ball and making sure that even though we're serving our high-performing students, we don't forget about our lower, underperforming students as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. At this time, we will hear from our School Properties Committee Report, from our Chairperson, Vice President Maria Carvalho.
School Properties Committee met on April seventh, 2025. The committee was provided with an updated, an update on the status of the ESIP ventilation projects. School number six, school number eighteen, Hamilton, Edison, and Edison Annex are complete and operational. School number four, nineteen, will have switched gears and soal to over Easter break, which will make them operational. School number twelve will be operational in the fall of 2025. School number five will have abatement completed over the summer of 2025 and expected operation at the end of 2025. The committee also requested a report on the status of all current projects. The committee was briefed on the assignments of sub-custodians. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. Next, we'll have our Ed Management Committee, presented by our Chairperson, Commissioner Stephanie Pastana.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Educational Management Committee met on April eighth, 2025 at four p.m. The Superintendent presented to the committee the twenty-three, twenty-four school performance report, including a district performance comparison to other large urban school districts, as well as comparing performance to the previous school year, twenty-two, twenty-three. The Elizabeth Public Schools outperformed other large school districts in various metrics, including ELA growth and performance, math performance on the NJ GPA, SAT participation. Additional metrics in which the Elizabeth Public Schools outperformed other large urban districts include advanced placement enrollment and exams, CTE enrollment, students enrolled in algebra and geometry, students earning Seal of Bilinguality, graduation rate, percentage of ESSA targets met or exceeded. That concluded our meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Pastana. Our Legal Committee Report by our Chairperson, Commissioner Rivera.
So the committee met on April eighth, 2025. The committee reviewed the revisions of the CPAC policy and regulation provided by the Special Education Committee. The police policy will be presented at the board meeting. The committee was provided with an update regarding current residency investigations. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And our final report for the evening, Finance and Accounting Committee Report by Chairperson, Commissioner Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Accounting Committee met on April tenth. Chris Brazano, the consultant from Accra Shore, spoke to the Finance Committee members about the twenty-four, twenty-five health benefits program, including paid claims for health, prescription, dental, and vision coverages. The Finance Committee discussed recommendations by the insurance broker for the renewal of health insurance coverages for the twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six school year, which we finalized at the May seventh, 2025 board meeting. I also would like to take this moment to thank Mr. Brazano, Mr. Mudid from Accra Shore, for helping us navigate the health insurance marketplace, as many other districts have suffered, unfortunately suffered pitfalls in being able to keep their health insurance expenses in line, especially considering the fact that after COVID and in this day and age, health insurance costs and claims have risen exponentially, but the great work that they have done as consultants has kept us in the clearing. I'm grateful under their leadership, along with Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Mahultra, along with Dr. Hugemeyer. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, we'd like to go over our claims list. Are there any questions for the board on Tab nine? Seeing none, hearing none. Ms. Kennedy, please add Tab nine to the agenda. Tab ten to ten M. Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. President, I have a question.
Sure.
The resolution about school bus evacuation drills, how we generate this data? The vendors send the numbers to our transportation department, or they need to complete any specific form to need to be submitted?
Yes. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, the New Jersey Department of Education provides specific forms that have to be completed, so the vendors are completing those forms and submitting them to our department. And then in turn, our transportation department is conducting the drills at all of the schools in our district.
Mr. President and Madam Superintendent, to follow up on what Commissioner Shevres mentioned, how do we, is it a computerized form? Is it a handwritten form that they have to do? How do we know it's accurate? How do we know it's reliable, it's valid? Based off of what? Is it just a ver...
I will gladly provide that information for you. I believe it is electrical information that's entered on a system, but I will definitely confirm that for you.
Can you also confirm, do they go with a scan? Do they scan it to see that this is the exact bus they're saying that they're doing to make sure it's valid and it's correct?
I will include that as well, certainly.
And when will we know the response?
Definitely after Easter break. We have a lot of folks that are on vacation, so certainly upon our return, roughly around April twenty-ninth, thirtieth.
No problem, no problem.
Absolutely.
Just I want to make a comment. Thank you, Commissioner Bathles, for follow-up, because that is my question. I know the protocols we had in our transportation department, but sometimes come in the challenge yet when we're talking about vendors, and most of the concern that we receive sometime from the community is about vendors. Thank you.
Thank you. So Board Resolution, School Evacuation Bus Drills is Tab ten. Tab ten A, we have a resolution presenting bilingual multicultural education month. Tab ten B, we have a resolution presenting Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Tab ten C, Better Speech and Hearing Month. Tab ten D, Kindness Awareness Month. You saw them on the schedule of a very busy May. Tab ten E, National School Nurses Day. Thank you to all our nurses. Tab ten F, National Teacher Appreciation Week. Please celebrate our teachers. Tab ten G, Special Education Week.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Could I stop you right there? I actually just want to highlight Special Education Week. I know that I was talking to our Special Education Director, Dr. Ojeda, and he has a whole bunch of things planned. and he has a whole bunch of things planned. So it continues on a lot of gifts and so it's going to be nice to see also between May eleventh and May seventeen, um, specific highlights to our special ed students. Continue.
Thank you. Tab ten H, uh, Payment for Unsec Used Days. Tab ten I, Payment for Unused Vacation Days. Tab ten J, Requisition for Taxes. Um, tab ten K, a resolution appointing Fred J. Miller Incorporated to provide marching band uniforms. Uh, just a question, were we getting new uniforms?
Yes, Mr. Nara, we are. Last time-
That's the second time in-
Uh, two thousand and seventeen, is that correct? Was the last time that the marching band received, uh, new uniforms. Um, and they certainly have earned-
Absolutely.
To have those replaced, absolutely.
Wonderful.
And it was twenty years before that.
Yes, that's what I said. That's a quick, uh, small gap.
Can I ask a question? Uh, maybe a comment. Um, the superintendent made a comment saying that they certainly earned it. I definitely agree with that. Do we have someone that we can say that they should be getting it? Is it like a every ten-year thing, every five-year thing? Or is it whenever we believe that the uniforms need to be changed?
It's really based on the wear and tear of the uniforms. Uh, the uniforms are sent out twice a year to be properly dry cleaned. Um, however, as a result of the multiple performances, difference, um, clearly the supervisor keeps us informed with regard to the condition of the uniforms.
Thank you.
I think it's really based on the, uh, the product, correct?
I, I would like to talk about that in private.
Sure.
Um, the color guards get new uniforms every single year for their different things. So I'm not saying that they, that I'll talk to you in private about this.
Absolutely. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Tab ten I, um, whereas a due process petition was filed with the Department of Education, Office of Special Education Programs, and referred to the Office of Administrative Law, OAL Docket Number EDS two thousand and twenty-three dash three five five four six. And whereas the parties have reached an amicable agreement pursuant to the terms of the settlement agreement, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education approves a settlement of the above-caption matters subject to terms of settlement agreement. Uh, that's tab ten L, I believe. And, uh, ten M, Consent for Transfer of Liquor License. And that is it. The resolutions for a lot of the events happening in the month of May were presented in the March meeting. At this time, the President requests a motion to go into a private session to consider matters under the Open Public Meetings Act, uh, specifically, uh, for discussion of legal matters specifically to H.I.B. appeal, uh, workman's compensation, R.B., J.R., and J.F.A. and legal settlement of E.K. Board Authorization Matters, Agenda Report Five B, Use of Facilities, Boards and Board Self-Evaluation. The Board will reconvene in public and make formal action. Uh, Mr. Kennedy, can we have a roll call to go into private?
I'm moved to go into private.
I second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Bathless.
Yes.
Carvallo.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs. Moreno Ortega. Concavas Pistana. Rivera.
Yes.
Nara.
Yes. I want to thank all our directors for attending this evening and, uh, joining us for this meeting. Thank you for your attendance and participation.
Additional items to be added to the agenda?
Yes, we have to add to the agenda a resolution settlement agreement, EK versus the BOE. A resolution settlement of workers compensation, FA. A resolution for settlement of workers compensation, NG. We have authorization report, 5B. And we have an approval of the Elizabeth Board of Education 2425 self-evaluation.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I also make a motion to untable tab 2A, please? And add it back onto the agenda?
Okay. Ms. Candy, can you add tab 2A back to the agenda, entirety?
Got to vote on that first.
I seconded that motion to bring back to that 2A.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Marine Ortega.
Yes.
Gunkavas Pustana.
Yes.
Rivera.
Yes.
Neron.
Yes.
Superintendent, would you please present the HIB report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Pursuant to Board Policy 5131, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and New Jersey statute 18A:37, the results of each investigation shall be reported to the Board of Education no later than the date of the next board meeting following completion of the investigation and include any services provided, training established, discipline imposed, or other action taken or recommended by the chief school administrator. Since our last Board of Education meeting on March 18th through April 9th, our school counselors, school-based social workers, and supervisor of anti-bullying have completed 70 HIB investigations. Of these investigations, 28 were founded for HIB. As per New Jersey law, there were 31 males, 57 females, 70 regular education students, and 18 special education students that were the alleged victims. There were 51 males, 53 females, 89 regular education students, 14 special education students, and one non-student that were the alleged offenders. Of the 28 cases founded for HIB, four cases were founded based on race and national origin. One case was founded based on color. One case was founded based on sexual orientation. Two cases were founded based on gender. One case founded based on gender and identity and expression. Two cases were founded based on mental, physical, or sensory disability. And 22 cases were founded based on other identifying characteristics. Of the services provided and actions taken for these investigations, there were 19 school development lessons, trainings, 58 counseling sessions, five behavioral interventions, 12 referrals for outpatient mental health treatment, 10 changes of classroom, four changes of school placement, five administrative counseling sessions, 17 in-school detentions, 48 parent conferences, three referrals to outside agencies, one professional development training, 16 out-of-school suspensions, and 10 cases are continuing to be monitored. The HIB statute further requires that at the next regularly scheduled meeting after board members receive the initial report of HIB investigations, that the board issue a decision in writing to affirm, reject, or modify the superintendent's decision pertaining to the 54 cases that were reported to you at the last board meeting on March 18th. In order for you to do so, the investigation summaries from those investigations which were reported to you at the last board meeting have been provided to you prior to this evening. And this completes the April HIB presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. May I have a motion in a second to approve the entire agenda and the additional items?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the entire agenda.
I'll second that.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, hearing none, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes, with an abstention on tab 4B. And tab 5.
Chavez. Jacobs. Marine Ortega.
Yes.
Gunkavas Pustana.
Yes, with an abstention on tab 5.
Rivera.
Yes, with an abstention on tab 5, page 4.
And Neron.
Yes, with an abstention on tab 2B, tab 4B, tab 5, page 2, and tab 5, page 1.
Okay, so the full agenda plus the added items has passed.
Thank you. Okay, everyone. Thank you for this evening. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam President.
Madam.
Oh.
It's late.
We're tired. I'm tired, I apologize. Mr. President. President Neron, I make a motion.
I second that motion.
That's a blue for a moment, right?
It is.
Y'all can run that back at the end of the year.
Yes, we will.
Keep that for December.
The things you won't miss.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes, good night and happy Easter, everyone.
Carvalho.
Yes, good night, happy Easter.
Chavez.
Yes, happy Easter, everyone.
Jacobs.
Yes, good night, happy Easter.
Marine Ortega.
Yes, good night, happy Easter, everyone.
Gunkavas Pustana.
Yes, good night, happy Easter, everyone.
Rivera.
Yes, good night, happy Easter.
Neron.
Yes, good night, happy Easter, and happy Resurrection Sunday. Enjoy your holiday. Take care, everyone.